Yes. Originally, yes.
Originally, yes.
So I saw at six o'clock, I'm going to make a motion. Would you want to make a motion to call meeting to order? And I said, yeah.
She's getting the copy.
Stop. It's okay.
Okay, do you have a copy of the package? Okay.
Why, what's that mean if you're recording? You can hear what I'm saying? Um, yeah, we just kind of go here. But. Do you have a meeting? Yeah.
Okay, at six o'clock, we're going to call the meeting to order. Going to make a motion to call the meeting to order.
Yes.
Second.
Yep.
Yep. And then we'll go over the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on eight twenty. So you want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
All in favor?
In favor.
Okay, and first on the agenda, we have RA oh four two four, the rezoning request for a six point nine acre acre parcel located on Connors Road from commercial medium density C two to commercial low density.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So before I go ahead and dive in with this item here, we're going to go ahead and get a PowerPoint going for you all because I'm a visual learner, so I can assume that that can help be beneficial for you all as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
You good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney. So RA dash zero four dash twenty four is in regards to Connors Road Package Store rezoning. Uh, the applicant A U P Enterprise LLC is actually seeking to rezone a six point zero nine acre parcel located on Connors Road from C one, which is commercial medium density down to C, or excuse me, C two, which is commercial medium density down to C one, which is commercial low density. So a little bit of background on this particular parcel. So the applicant's subject parcel is actually situated south of Carroll's Road, east of Garnet Drive, north of Permian Way, and approximately point three nine miles north of I twenties exit twenty six. This parcel doesn't have any structures, is, um, has no developed structures on there or anything. The current zone again is C two, which is commercial medium density, and the applicant's proposing to downzone that lot to C one. Um, a little bit of information on package stores as a whole. So on August seventeen, two thousand twenty one, citizens did vote through a referendum on allowance of package stores in Distilled Spirits in the city of Villareca. And in two thousand twenty three, the city council actually approved the applicant and the subject parcel as District One's present of licensee for package stores in Distilled Spirits. So, um, they proposed development. Each zone actually has distinct development standards, and that's actually from section four point zero four, which is lot standards. Each lot, particularly like C two lots inside the city of Villareca, if you want to go ahead and build a new development on a C two lot, the minimum lot size has to be two and a half acres. And the applicant is actually proposing to downsize or downzone the parcel and actually make it C one, which will allow, um, a minimum lot size of one acre. And then after the rezoning, the applicant is actually requesting to or proposing to, um, subdivide the lot into four parcels. And they look something like this. And that, those two red lines, perpendicular lines right there, those are, um, actually the proposed private lot or street that's actually going to go actually in the middle of the lot or go run in the middle of the lot, and is actually going to connect, uh, Connors Road and, um, Permian Way down there at the bottom. So a little bit more information on the proposed development. So that top left corner, that orange parcel right there, parcel one, is actually after the applicant actually divides this lot, this six point zero nine acre lot into four tracks. Um, this is their site plan that they actually gave to the city. And, uh, as you can see, parcel one is actually one point one two acres, is actually on the corner of Connors Road and Garnet Drive. And, uh, that lot is actually going to have a four thousand eight hundred and seventy five square foot convenience store and, um, fill a station actually on that parcel. Now parcel two, which is in the middle there, is actually going to be a one point four four five acre lot. And, um, that is actually going to be where the package store will actually be located on. And, uh, the package store is actually going to be ten thousand square foot building. Now parcel three is east of parcel two, as you all can see. Um, the applicant is actually not proposing to develop anything on that parcel as of yet, but, um, he did, as you can see on the, um, site plan, they will have a retention slash detention pawn actually on that parcel, but no structures. And lastly, the parcel four was on the corner of, um, Garnet Drive and Permian Way. That's actually going to remain undeveloped for a possible future development. And again, there's representation, those two red lines there, of the, uh, proposed private street that runs through. So for a applicant to actually have, um, or develop a distilled spirits store or package store within our city, they actually have to abide by section eight point two seven, which is liquor stores, package stores, and liquor outlets. Basically, these are the supplementary conditions that have to be followed to actually meet all criteria to actually develop a distilled spirit building on, um, a lot within our city. So you can see, all package stores are actually restricted only in C one and C two lots or zones, excuse me. And, um, as you all are aware, this current lot is actually zone C two, and the applicant is actually trying to downzone it to C one. And then on the left-hand corner, uh, these are these supplementary conditions that have to be met. Um, the staff actually reviewed all of these, and some of the things like, uh, the property must have at least two hundred feet of row frontage, which it does meet, and actually meets it right on that top corner as it has like a little, um, spur that's right there, and that's actually the two hundred feet of row frontage that's actually off of Connors Road. Um, other things like, um, the lot actually has to be at least one acre, and even when the applicant actually subdivides this lot into four tracks, it does meet that one acre, uh, criteria. And as you all can see, um, other things like, uh, has to be a single tenant actually on that lot, and, uh, as well as things like have to meet, um, fire marshal requirements. So based of all, based off of all that, um, staff's recommendation for the rezoning for the six point zero nine acre parcel located on Connors Road for, and, um, the applicant is actually trying to see if they can downzone it from C two down to C one. Uh, staff does recommend approval for this because it does meet, uh, section eight point two seven. Uh, the, the previous slide, it meets all the development standards for a package store. And also, um, the rezoning does align with the comprehensive plan where it's still commercial. It's inside that commercial corridor of Mirror Lake Boulevard. And, um, lastly, the applicant simply wants to maximize that lot. Instead of just building one package store on a six acre lot on a pretty visible prime area, he's actually trying to see if he can simplify the lot and actually make a, uh, plaza, which, um, will be very, very, very beneficial for the city. And do, uh, the Commissioners have any questions or concerns with staff?
I do. Um, is there access to the gas station from Garnet Drive, or is the only access on this private drive?
Um, it's actually, some access is actually off of Garnet, as you can see right there on the corner there. Excuse me. Right there, thank you.
And then you'll be able to access it through?
Yes, that private access also has a road, I do believe, that goes into the, uh, gas station.
And then who would be responsible for the maintenance of the private drive? It's private, so it wouldn't be the city's responsibility, is that correct?
No, ma'am.
Do you have any questions? Will there, will there be any separation between the gas station and the liquor store? Or will there be?
Um.
Traffic? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I do believe that they will have a curb that's actually there, and the only way that those two lots will actually be connected is that driveway, that, um, through area connecting the Distilled Spirits lot and the fill a station lot.
So this right here is curving, or is this open?
That, that plan looks like it has what we call inter parcel connectivity.
Yes, at the bottom as well.
So you would be able to drive from one parcel to the other within the parcels, but this is just a, uh, and the applicant can speak to this, this is a preliminary plan, so you will not be, you know, this could change. What, what you're considering tonight is just a zoning issue from changing from C two to C one.
Do you have any questions? Thank you, Sean.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, now I want to ask the applicant if they would like to come forward.
Good evening. My name's Joel Larkin, I'm an attorney with Sam's Larkin and Huff, and Mary, I don't appreciate the chance of you here tonight. I'm kind of surprised that we have such a full audience tonight. It's a, it's interesting. All that the applicant is seeking to do here is create additional lots. This property is currently zone C two, which allows them to do both the convenience store and the package store. It's six plus acres, so we could create two lots that are in excess of two and a half acres and build both of those, uh, retail establishments right now. Now, those plans are in the works, and we hope to be breaking ground on that soon. This is essentially a housekeeping matter because we're not trying to add any new uses or bring any new influence to the area. If anything, we're probably decreasing the, the number and types of retail uses that could come to the area by downzoning it to a less intense commercial. But the purpose of this zoning is to allow the creation of the two undeveloped lots for future development. And when we'd met with staff early on, they had suggested we could wait and do that later after we build. But when you go through financing, uh, they're going to want a deed to secure debt on the property and, and inter partial access agreements, uh, to deal with that future development. So it's most efficient and economical to go ahead and subdivide it before we build. But no, but none of the requests that are before you tonight relate to whether or not we can build a package store or whether or not we can build a convenience store. It, it's future planning for the site. Uh, and I'm happy to respond to any questions that you have, and the, the applicant is here tonight as well. He's a resident of Villareca, uh, and, uh, I would also like to reserve time for rebuttal.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, now we'll go into public hearing, or public. Does anyone want to, if you, um, have something to say, if you want to come up here, you have to state your name and address in three minutes. Anyone would like to speak? For or against? Public comment.
Hello, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Bowen Kendrick, thirty two fifteen Bakewell Street, Douglasville, Georgia. I'm an attorney at Hartley Rowan Fowler in Douglasville. I'm here tonight on behalf of Tanner Health System. Primarily, I'm here tonight also with a Mr., Mr. Gary Thomas, Vice President of Tanner Health System. Uh, they have a few concerns going into the plan and the project, mostly the development of the property in such a way as to provide a package store, things of that nature. They are located at one oh one Quartz Drive, immediately adjacent behind where the project is planned. As Mr. Thomas will go into more detail in just a second, one of their primary concerns is that the facility that Tanner operates there also houses what's called Willowbrook Counseling and Psychiatric Care. Uh, one of the services they provide is counseling to those individuals who have substance abuse problems. And what they get is quiet, uh, I guess you would say an irony of something, some nature, to leave that facility and see a package store across the street from it, developed in such a way. That is a great concern of theirs, and I know that they're going to want to voice that through Mr. Thomas in just a moment. We also have Representative Mrs. Miller, Rita Miller, who's here from the Birches. She will probably want to give a statement as well. That immediately backs where this planning is set. Uh, the private way that you see there will come immediately in front of where the Birches is currently located. They have some concerns as well about the property. And I understand we may also have some members of the Lifegate Church as well, who is just to the southeast of the property. I know particularly talking from Tanner Health Systems, their concern is there's currently a restrictive covenant about businesses that would pose a public nuisance. Uh, their concern at this point is beyond nuisance, it's sort of the health of their clients who are leaving their facility there. Particularly the, those individuals suffering from substance abuse and their counseling for that. So without taking more of your time, I would like to introduce, uh, Mr. Gary Thomas.
Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, my name's Gary Thomas. I live at four zero five East Johnson Street in Temple, and I'm here tonight as the Vice President for Campus and Support Services for Tanner Health System. And we are requesting that the Planning Commission recommend denial of this request tonight. Quartz Drive and Permian Way are streets that contain mostly professional type occupancies. There are currently not any general commercial type occupancies on these two streets. All the parcels at the end of Permian Way and boarding Devonian Drive and also contiguous to this parcel we are discussing tonight are listed as property owned by Lifegate Church, which is located at the end of Permian Way. I believe there are some people here tonight from the church. The other parcels on Quartz Drive and Permian Way are all medical and professional buildings, either owned by Tanner Health or others. Tanner Health owns the Mirror Lake Medical Office Building, and Tanner Health is a partner with the Birches at Villareca, which is an assisted living community. The Mirror Lake Office Building contains the following medical type practices. Tanner Urgent Care, Willowbrook Counseling Center, Willowbrook Psychiatric Center, Tanner Health Source, Tanner Primary Care at Mirror Lake, Villareca Family Medicine, and Tanner Neurology. I would like to focus on two of those practices and the potential impact to those practices by the proposed use of this parcel. Willowbrook Psychiatric Center has been operating in the Mirror Lake Medical Office Building since two thousand seventeen, and residing at this address is now a very large practice containing eleven providers, providing adult, child, and adolescent general, maternal, and addiction psychiatry to our community members and to patients who travel from across the state to receive these specialty services. The clinic is open Monday through Friday, eight thirty to five. Just last year, the team saw seventeen thousand and twenty four visits of the patient type mix to receive treatment from this office. To say the placement of a liquor store next to a well-established addiction and psychiatric clinic is not ideal is an understatement. We would be concerned for the lack of respect and lack of thought being given to the community members seeking long-term help with their mental health and their sobriety and addiction and their physical and emotional well-being. When this was originally brought before the Planning Commission and before the city, we assumed that this liquor store, this package store, would face Connors Road. At least at that point, when our patients would leave the building, they would only see the back of the store. Under the new proposal, it is right in the front door by this new proposal, and we are, we are extremely opposed to that. The Willowbrook Counseling Center has been operating in the Mirror Lake Office Building since two thousand sixteen, providing outpatient counseling to the same classifications of patients as the Willowbrook Counseling Center. This is the next step in their treatment process. The Counseling Center operates Monday through Friday, eight thirty to five, with evening appointments upon request. And just like the psychiatry center, the placement of this type of distraction in our front door would certainly have a negative impact on the patients treated at the center. I think it's in the best interest of the city that Permian Way remain professional and professional type buildings that are located there. That's what's been there. That's why we chose, along with our partner, to locate the Birches there because it was a professional community, and this will turn it more into just a commercial street. And we are opposed to that. Any questions?
Yeah, so is it your assertion that you're here on behalf of your patients and their well-being?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any evidence that, um, in terms of outcomes, that, uh, like clinic patients that, uh, visit those types of clinics are more likely, are the outcomes changed as a result of, uh, bearing witness to such a facility?
Research has shown that anything that would distract or tempt them, and, and naturally, your first thought might be, well, they can go across the street to the Publix or right down the street to the Publix. But that's not staring them in when they just came out of a counseling session. And a lot of times, I would consider these counseling sessions to almost be on an emergency basis. They're, especially when they're going to the psychiatry center, they're in crisis. And to leave that after their therapist has tried to work them through this and immediately walk out the door and be tempted is, is not good for those patients.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes, ma'am.
At this Willowbrook Counseling Center, um, I understand that at the Carrollton and other Villareca main locations is where you house much of your crisis centers, like your PHP program and I O P program?
Correct.
Does this location on Permian Way have those same services, or are these post?
These are, these are generally, these are post-inpatient.
Okay.
Uh, the, the facility on Dallas Highway is an inpatient facility. This is outpatient treatment once they've left that inpatient facility, or for patients that don't necessarily need that inpatient treatment.
Okay, so I'm asking because I'm familiar with both of those other locations, which tend to be near gas stations and package stores that are in those convenience stores. What have you guys done to limit the access to that that you think would be any different than this?
I don't know of any of our locations that are in the proximity as the same of this development. Yes, there is a convenience store down the street from the Willowbrook Facility. There's not any convenience stores near our Carrollton Facility. It is completely surrounded. It just moved. It just moved within the last week to Doctor's Drive.
Right.
Which is completely surrounded by professional.
Hospital.
And, and, and the hospital. And, and that is naturally our preference. And I don't know if we would have been so inclined to, and there's somebody here from the Birches, so I don't want to speak for her, but I, I don't know that we would have been so inclined to develop the Birches in that location if we knew this was going to come more of a commercial than a professional area.
Okay, and then my next question, I don't know that you can answer it, but based on the drawing that is up on the screen, it looks to me like the liquor store or package store, the front entrance faces Connors Drive, not the Willowbrook Center. Is that accurate? Because it looks like the back is going to be no windows and just unloading space.
And, and I was not sure either which way it faces. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, there's a lot of questions to be answered about this, and we want to get those arguments up front.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Rita Miller Davis. I am the Executive Director at the Birches at Villareca Assisted Living located at two zero one Permian Way. For the sake of time, I'm going to read my statement. This assisted living opened in September of two thousand twenty one and can serve up to seventy residents. The community was, was at and has maintained full capacity since early on of the opening. This is their home. We have an active, vibrant group of individuals living here that have, over their lifetime, made a significant contribution to our current lifestyle because of the work they have done for us. There are bankers, firemen, veterans, teachers, people who have paved the way for us. To walk out of your home and to see a beverage store is not the environment that they were asking for or they deserved when they moved to this location. I'm not opposed to a beverage store being in Villareca, but please, not at this location. Regardless of it faces Connors Road or Permian Way, it will be an eyesore for these residents, having it a commercial property as such. Our residents and families have choices of where they can live. They chose us because of the great care and reputation, but also because of the beauty of our location. The development of this store in this location could significantly harm the Birches at Villareca as many residents and families may choose to relocate. We have a great number of visitors traveling in and out of our building on a daily basis. We have residents that continue to drive their vehicles. We do not need potential customers of a beverage store to decrease the safety of our residents, families, visitors, and staff. Liquor stores by nature attract a certain element that is undesirable to have near an assisted living that has around-the-clock caregivers and staff entering and exiting the building. Surely, the zoning commission can see the danger and dissatisfaction of our residents and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just have a question for Sean. If we were to not move this parcel to a C one, what types of businesses could be put on a C two parcel?
Well, um, the applicant and this exact lot, they're actually the present of licensees. So, um, even if you all choose to not actually, I guess, vote for this to be downzoned, they could still, they're still.
They can still put a liquor store there.
Yeah.
Because C two.
That's what I was looking for. Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Praveen Patel. I'm the resident of, uh, Villareca. Been living in Villareca for about nine years now. I moved from New Jersey when I, when I came here.
What's your address?
Uh, three zero zero two State Tree Court, Villareca. So I actually support this development. Uh, I work from home. Uh, I don't much get out from home. So like, you know, having a store would be something I'm looking forward to go. Like Publix was right there. I used to go there actually just for a stroll. Uh, so I, I do support this development, and I don't think it's going to. I don't think it's going to harm community. If anything, it's going to bring like, you know, a few more jobs to people here. So I totally support this development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Collins. I live at 206 South Carroll Road in Villarica, Georgia. I want to speak against this rezoning for a couple of different reasons. Not that I'm against the, the package sale or alcohol sales in our community, specifically the liquor store. As a matter of fact, I was one of those legislators who sponsored legislation that allowed local governments to actually put this on the ballot and do away with the old referendum-type movement that was needed. But my concern is the socio-economic area that we're going to be looking at. I think Tanner has brought up some very valid points. I think we've made great strides in this community and in this state to help facilitate, you know, people overcoming addiction to address a lot of mental health issues. But the socio-economic condition of this area is what's concerning to me. Just a few weeks ago, I went to the Dollar Store that's located right around the corner from this proposed rezoning. You know, you can't even take a grocery cart or a cart out of the Dollar Store anymore. You know why? Because people are stealing the carts. That's just something I want this body to think about. You're going to put a liquor store right next to an area where you can't even shop and take your cart out to your car, once you fill it with merchandise, because you've had residents in the community that are stealing the shopping carts. That's not a good idea to mix these two problems together. I think Ray Charles could see that this needs to be voted down for a whole host of reasons. And, and not to mention the fact that, you know, this area was developed as a professional area, and there are plenty of places in this community where the zoning could be done and it wouldn't affect the community. But those seniors that are living over there in the Birch's, somebody needs to help protect them. They, they have made a substantial investment to be able to, to sit, to finish out their golden years in the City of Gold, and they don't need to have to worry about living across the street from a liquor store. Again, I'm not against the package stores, liquor stores being in this community, but, but this is something that, that just does not need to happen, and I hope you would have the courage and the foresight to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh 1164 Clive Street, Villarica, Georgia. Those are good points. Tanner brought up some good ones. You also have to think about it, you have Sunbrook at Mirror Lake across from there on Connors. And that's an academy for children, right? If you got that academy for children, then you got somebody getting drunk in that liquor store parking lot, and they pull out, hit one of them kids and a mother or a kid and a father, and kill them, what's that going to do? You gotta think about all that. You got a school on down Connors. You've got churches. You've got two churches right there in close proximity to this place. This ain't ideal at all. No, like they said, you got somebody with an addiction, you don't take something out there and set it to them and, and hey, hey, look, what's here, look, what's here. You don't do that. Makes it worse. We got enough people running around this city now with addictions. It's everywhere. Y'all probably want to think about all that before y'all vote on this one.
Thank you.
Pamela White, 102 Anderson Road. My concern is, and I'm neither just against, uh, package stores or whatever, but I, however, I do have some concerns. Did the applicant do their due diligence to see what was in the surrounding areas before they selected packaging? Because there is, daycares that are out that way, there are schools, there are rehab facilities that not only family and friends may go to, but just anyone that, like they say, have made this their home. So this needs to be taken into great consideration before it moves forward, because we, we all know what can happen. If we put the cart before the horse, it's, it's kind of hard to turn things around. So I just hope that you all take it into a great measure and consideration and just say no to it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hal Pesant. I live at 1032 Overlook Drive in Villarica, Georgia. Mr. Patel is my neighbor. I've gotten to know him for about the past couple of years. I've been a resident since 2006, so I've seen Villarica grow. I've seen all the development down Connors Road, and I think it's, some of them better than others, obviously, but I've seen the development that we've had here. And I think that we all ought to be glad that we have entrepreneurs who are willing to invest in Villarica, add to our tax base, and keep our tax base for the residents as low as possible. But I think it's also important that we, that we know that we have an entrepreneur who actually lives in Villarica, who's willing to invest in the community that he lives in, and obviously does not want to diminish the quality of life in the city where he lives, just a couple of miles from where he lives. I've gotten to know my neighbor, the quality, the character of his personage. He's a good neighbor. He's a good friend. He's a family man. I've gotten to know him, not just his immediate family, but his extended family. I've seen them all together. And I think that I know, or I feel, that the businesses that he runs will be run with integrity and will not be a detriment to the Villarica community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for a public comment?
I think the applicant wanted to-
Good evening. My name is Alita Dobbs Farmer, 216 Anderson Road in Villarica, Georgia. I am a licensed professional counselor, a master's addiction counselor, and the population that Willowbrook and Tanner were speaking to are the individuals that I see. I currently see most of my individuals now currently virtual. However, when people are dealing with addiction, there's a lot of different processes that they go through, and usually the stage of change is they sometime be in the pre-contemplating change. And so when they start initially seeking treatment, what they normally have to do is they are trying to get up the courage to work on, you know, what they call denial, or just being able to recognize that they need help. And so when you're making situations like liquor stores, package stores, whatever you want to call it, accessible, what it does is it puts the temptation even greater for that population. And so working with them, I can understand why that could be an issue. I'm not saying that we can't have liquor stores, it's unrealistic. We have it in the grocery stores now. But all I'm saying is just to consider the fact that those individuals, most of the time, when they first seek treatment, it is not, it's at a point where it's a crucial point in their recovery, and it requires for them to have that support system in place. And when you have things that tempt them really accessible to them, when they either go in or come in, because sometimes they don't even make it to their appointments. So I would just like y'all to think about the population that, of individuals that is in a, in proximity of that particular liquor store or package store. So I do believe that it may be beneficial somewhere else in Villarica, but right there, I do see that as a harm for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. Unfortunately, I have personal knowledge and experience with addiction, and I'm kind of embarrassed by what I've just heard of me. The fact that, that they think this liquor store could impact people any more than any other location. But as I said in the beginning, we're not here tonight to decide whether or not there'll be a package store or a convenience store here. This property is now Zone C2. It was Zone General Commercial long before Tanner built their buildings, long before the Birch's came in. It was a planned commercial development. Tanner came in knowing it was all Zone Commercial. The Birch's came in knowing it was all Zone Commercial. What they're trying to do now is run this entrepreneur off so they can buy the property. They've made that clear to us. But, but this board doesn't, we're not here to approve or disapprove a package store. If this zoning isn't approved, then they'll just go forward with larger lots. And this is simply a question of, can we do four commercial lots or can we do two commercial lots? If we do two commercial lots, Lot Number One is going to be a convenience store, Lot Number Two is going to be the package store. So what we're trying to do is get additional value and benefit for the area, for my client and for the City of Villarica, which needs more commercial development. When, when the gentleman from Tanner got up and spoke, he, he started out saying, they were aware this package store was coming, and they were okay with it because they assumed it was facing Connors Road. Well, it is facing Connors Road. It's hidden behind the convenience store as far as the site from their counseling center. But the distance from their counseling center, that's something that has been evaluated as a matter of state law. There are certain distances that package stores have to be from certain types of uses. This, this location, anywhere in the site meets all of those distances. If this were a state-run counseling center, then there's a distance requirement, and we more than meet that. So, you know, I, I can appreciate that they would like to buy this property and, and expand their kingdom, but this property is not for sale. It's going to develop. It's going to develop commercially, and it's a good thing for the City of Villarica. To hear them get up and talk about how this package store is going to bring people to the area that are going to shoot up in the parking lot and steal your grocery cart and mug you and, and bring down everybody else's property value, I mean, it's ludicrous. This gentleman is going to invest millions and millions of dollars in this site. He's a local businessman. He's going to own and operate it. He has another store in Carrollton that does just fine. He doesn't have junkies in the parking lot. He doesn't have alcoholics sleeping in shopping carts. There's, there's not a crime problem. I mean, this is a very simple housekeeping matter. We would very much appreciate it if the city would see fit to allow us to subdivide the property now, because it'll be much easier from a financing and, you know, administration standpoint. But ultimately, even if we can't subdivide it, the project's going to move forward. There's way too much invested in those, you know, in the property already. The, the, the local electorate has approved package stores in the area. They've determined that it's not going to be a scourge on everybody. It's not going to bring down all the property values. So we would ask that you accommodate the applicant and recommend approval of his downzoning to C1 so that he can bring four new businesses to the area instead of two. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could say something also. Several people that have spoke tonight, I consider friends and respect and have known for years and years and years. But, and, and just so the audience knows, and you guys know, I think y'all know, there's not a vote you can make tonight that will stop this package store. What you are deciding is whether or not they, they're going to be C1 or C2. That's the only decision or recommendation that you're making tonight. There was a public hearing February 7th, I believe, of 2023 before council, and there was advertisements on the, there was a sign on the property advertising the, the hearing. And I went back and reviewed, and unfortunately, no one came and spoke against the, the package store, and the council voted, it was a split vote, three to two, to name the applicant as the designated licensee for that ward. If he later comes in, and what that means is he, we can't issue a license because he doesn't have a building there. But that, that's, the license issue's not before tonight. That, that will come back at some point if he proceeds with his plans, and there'll be public hearings, and there'll be a vote on the license. But if he builds his building in such a way that it meets the requirements under state law and the city ordinances, he's been approved for that license. But, so what he says, what he is saying is regardless of whether this zoning application is approved or not, he has the legal right to go forward with his plans, and that, and that's true. So what, what you guys have to do tonight is apply, and I want you to apply these legal standards in making your decision. This is a rezoning request, and a rezoning request is to request an amendment to the official zoning map, so changing the zoning map with this parcel, these parcels from C2 to C1. And the criteria you have to apply is, one, the comprehensive plan, the current conditions and character or current structures and uses in each district, the most desirable use, conservation of the property values throughout the jurisdiction, and responsible development and growth. And that's what I think staff put in their reports, but I, I understand the concerns. They're all legitimate concerns about the package store. Unfortunately, that's not what's before you tonight. What's before you tonight is just the rezoning request from C2 to C1.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. You took the words out of what I was going to say, because on the PowerPoint slide, we saw in 2023, they voted for this licensee in this package store. No matter how we vote tonight, it doesn't stop a package store. You can have a mega store, or we can have four businesses in the area that look like all the other businesses on Connor Drive and in that corner. So unless anybody has any other comments, I'll make a motion.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I don't think anything that is wildly different from what you guys said.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning from C2 to C1 on this parcel.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And would any, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I think we have a-
Oh, we have a more.
-public comment on the-
Oh, public comment. Would anyone like to make a public comment?
I think some people signed up.
About more? I thought those were our public comments.
I thought, yeah.
Wouldn't there be more?
There's more public comment?
We, we had a public hearing and public comments, a little different, but-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, and I understand what he's saying. They do have a legal standpoint, they can build what they want to on it. Unfortunately, 2023, somebody said, or a group said, hey, let's go ahead and vote this in and let them do this. We're not only facing it here on Mirror Lake. You know, I, I've got one there talking about building a package store close to a church on the other side of town. And if that happens, it happens, I guess. Problem I have with all of it is we, we keep coming in here, and this is what I'm, this is what's going to come before council. This is where it's going to get tricky with council. If we're going to come in here and we're going to approve this to be broke up and go to C1, when it was C2, and then we're going to come back, well, you know what? We're going to change our mind. We didn't, we, we're not going to be able to get what we thought we could on this lot, so now we're going to come back and go to C2. We need to do that again. That, that, they run into at council meetings all the time. Okay? I watched them give grief to the Waffle House about some zone ordinances. And I guess this is where it starts at, is P and Z. They all approved those, right? That's where all that starts? I mean, that's, it's insane at what gets approved here in P and Z zoning-wise. We went to a council meeting and watched something get zoned, C2, and they stated in the council meeting, said mayor stated, well, we don't have no C2 zon- ordinances right now for zoning in C2, but we're going to make it C2. We won't go ahead and vote to make it C2, but we don't have no ordinances for it. We won't go ahead and vote to make it C2, but we don't have no ordinances for it. That don't make no sense, does it? But we did that. The more y'all keep breaking up these lots and adding asphalt and concrete, the more water problems we're going to keep having. That's fine if y'all want to flood Villarica out, because that's what's going to eventually happen. This infrastructure can't take all the asphalt and the concrete, all the stuff y'all keep breaking these lots up into. It can't take it. It won't take it. That's a fact. I preach it every council meeting. So y'all probably always think about all of that when y'all go to making these decisions to rezone things and break lots up and put more lots and put more concrete, more asphalt. You know, we dodged a bullet with this storm. And this storm come over here, we probably won't be standing in this building. We all know the water problems we got, and it's facts. So the more we break these things up in different lots and add more concrete and asphalt and all that stuff, the more we're adding to the water problems. But it starts here, and it's got to stop somewhere. You know, we can't get nobody else to listen to us, so maybe y'all listen.
Thank you.
Can I say something? So none of us here, commissioners, were here in the past. So I don't think we're responsible for any votes beyond the last four meetings that I've been here at least, and the meetings that we've all been commissioners. I know that we all took an oath and we're going to uphold the planning and zoning rules, and that's our sole purpose. And then I have all the confidence in the world that the city is going to hold these developers accountable because I'm in public at the city council meetings too. And I will be making comments if we're not doing so so that we make sure that stormwater ordinances, laws, codes, things that need to be followed during the permitting process and build process are executed effectively. And I am absolutely delighted to see the amount of public that are getting involved in our community and voicing their opinion. It matters. Your voice matters, and that's why I volunteered to do this. And my little part of it is going to be planning and zoning. And what we did tonight is only going to determine that they can put four businesses versus one mega liquor store. Really didn't change what the developer can do. So I think we effectively accomplished what we're supposed to do. That's all.
Is there anyone else for public comment? I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?